All this meeting to order, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Doral.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
President Bannersville.
Here.
Trustee Walsh-Lager. Trustee Ledke. Trustee Connor.
Here.
At this time, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Doral.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have public comments for anybody that would like to speak on any items that are not on the agenda. Since we have no one that wants to speak in public comments, we will move to our first item, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes of the August 12, 2019, meeting.
Also, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Our next item is a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments that is in the amount of $380,704.21.
I move to approve vouchers in an amount of $380,704.21.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers for $380,704.21. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have on the agenda is a consideration of actions related to licenses and permits. For these, these are bartenders' operators' licenses, expire in June 30, 2020. This is for Shannon Carroll.
I make a motion we approve the license for Shannon Carroll.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bartender's license for Shannon Carroll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Upsteen.
That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is an application, or the next permit we have is an application for a fireworks permit. This is for Lake Country Lutheran High School. It's for homecoming. It's September 27, 2019, is the date of that event.
Also moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move forward the fireworks permit for Lake Country Lutheran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we have a first reading of a bill for an ordinance 826-2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 82 of the Village Code pertaining to collection of forfeitures for non-moving traffic violations. While this is only a first reading, Ryan, can you kind of touch on this one?
Chief.
As you stated, this is just a first reading, so we'll go through it a couple more times, but just wanted to let you guys know what we're doing. We're going to look to modify Section 82-4, the penalty side of the section, so we'd be increasing parking citations for, I'll call our general offenses, $25, so it'd be from $10 to $25. And then for our handicap violation, which is currently $50, jumping that up to $75. We have not had an increase in many years, and I've called around and checked with our neighboring communities, and this would be consistent with what our neighboring communities are currently doing. One other thing that was not codified in ordinance is the procedure that we use for collecting our parking citations. So again, $25 and $75 for handicap would be the fine amounts. If they're not collected within five days, those fine amounts would double, so you'd go to 50 or 150. And then, if they're not collected within 30 days, we would suspend the vehicle registration until those fines were paid, and then they'd have to take care of their vehicle registration in addition to. Also, if these fines are currently being issued without a court hearing tied to them because they're a parking citation, if someone did want to contest through the Lake Country Court, there's a process in place that we would issue on the deposit amount of either $25 or $75, which with court costs would make the citation either 92.50 for the general parking, because you've got to add in those court costs and all the other fees that the state and county and jail and all the other assessments that go with a citation that you'd need to collect, or it would be $187 for the handicap parking citation. That would update our ordinance as far as what our fine structure is, and then also codify how the actual collection goes with the five-day doubling and then the 30-day suspension.
Okay.
Chief, are we doing this because there's such a horrendous problem of parking problems in our village, or are we doing it just to keep up with our neighbors?
I think it's probably a little bit of both. We've had issues throughout the village of Heartland with parking, and sometimes, I don't know, what I've been told at least, that $10 parking citation may not dissuade someone from violating the ordinance, but I also think probably the bigger piece is we are a little bit behind. I know when I came into office, this is one of those items that Chief Bagan had left on his desk saying, "At some point, parking citation fines should be addressed." So I kind of took that on as I, after my transition, and I felt it was a good time to update that, especially with winter parking, probably our most frequent violation by and large is our winter parking violations. And that doesn't just impact us and the work that it does for the parking violation, but it actually impacts the DPW and their snowplow operations pretty significantly. So we wanted to actually put some type of consequence behind the fine.
I like the idea of us doing this for the reason that, I don't know how long it's been, $10, but I'm guessing it's been quite some time, but 10 or 15 years ago, $10 was a lot more money than it is now. And it really isn't, I mean, $10 just isn't seeming to be a deterrent. I know we've had some, we've done a lot of work for parking, you know, to make sure people are doing what's right and parking where they're supposed to, and what started to happen a little bit where I've kind of feel that this is good, or I don't, not kind of, I really feel this is good, is that because our police department is so nice about this, and they really are, there has been stories I've heard of where officers have literally gone through the businesses or restaurants on Capitol just saying, you know, "Hey, whose car, whose license plate is this?" It's whatever, a red Toyota, saying, "Hey, your car's been out there, whatever. Your car's parked illegally. We don't want to give you a ticket." But they might spend 20 minutes doing that. I think that it's proper to have whatever laws we want to have in place, but it's also proper that the fines be there to deter people, and like on Capitol, if we feel that two-hour parking isn't, is too short, we can always change that, but I think we're all, we've been working for some time, you know, people brought it to attention that there's an issue with the parking and with the parking lines and everything. I think this is just part of working towards that goal.
I do have one question for you with the parking lines, because I'm still having problems in front of my house. Is it the rear wheels that have to be inside the parking lines or the car itself? Because if the rear wheels are inside the parking lines in front of my house, that bumper's in my driveway.
That would be a problem, and it would be an obstruction of your driveway, and that would actually be as, issued, it could be issued for a violation.
I know their argument's going to be, "I was parked in a designated spot."
The, if I could chime in, I just, I know in most, and I know one, we don't want to become a major city.
Yeah.
In most major cities, like when you have metered traffic, I don't know if you guys ever saw the show, like those Parking Wars and stuff like that? It is the vehicle in its entirety.
Okay.
It is not the, you know, if you had, you know, if you have an old classic car that literally from the rear wheels to the back of that bumper is almost six feet, you can't just get the rear wheels on and then that bumper gets to hang over, and you're right, that does, but it is the entirety of the car, so you have to imagine imaginary line going up from that, you know, that white parking lines, imagine imaginary line going up, the entirety of that vehicle should be in there. Hence, if a very large, an oversized truck parked and could just get their wheels on there, but they're extending in both directions, it's just not a proper place for them to park. That's my interpretation, if we need to clarify it in amending so that it is in black and white, in case anybody were to challenge it, obviously the board can address that.
And that state statute, there's general distances, depending on what it is, within a crosswalk, within a driveway, within the end of the road, within a fire hydrant, can range from anywhere from four to 15 feet, and we measure from whatever part of the car where it starts, whatever, the rear bumper of the car, the front bumper, whatever it may be, to that area. Now, where we wouldn't apply those, though, is where we have lines painted. That may put that literally a foot from your driveway. Under state statute, you'd need to be four feet, but if it's identified differently, we would not, that would not be a violation. So if they were good within the lines, but still not four feet, we would say that's okay. If they're outside the lines and obstructing your driveway, that would be a problem.
Copy that, chief.
And if I could also address, I know some of the issues stem from the downtown parking, and we do spend some time trying to gain compliance, because one thing is, we want compliance at the end of the day, that's our main goal, is to seek that compliance, and we thought if we can inform the downtown business community of the violations and some of the complaints that we were getting, that it would hopefully correct itself. We also know, when we come down heavy-handed on a parking enforcement issue, we also will start citing customers, and then you turn that problem from a parking issue into now no one's coming to my business issue. So we're trying to play this thing so everyone tries to understand without affecting any type of business as well. Again, our main goal is compliance. The other piece of it is, with a two-hour parking restriction, it does become labor-intensive for the police department in the fact that we've got to be able to prove that two-hour violation, and we do that through chalking tires, or photographs, or observation. It's hard for us just to take someone's word, and they call and they say, "They were there two hours," and then we cite the car, and then I got a guy bringing me in a video that, from a doorbell that shows he was only there hour and 45 minutes. So we chase our tail with some of that. So we will chalk tires, but then some people even are on to that, and they'll move up or move across the street, and now we're just playing some of this cat and mouse-type games, which we're trying to avoid. Again, our whole point of this is compliance with the two-hour restriction when it comes in, and then when needed, because of the labor that goes in, we're hoping $25 is actually a little more of an incentive to not continue to violate than $10 was.
Right. It's a tough, it's a tough issue. I think it's good that we're taking the steps we have, and that we've been working on it for a year and a half. Like what Chief just alluded to, technically, that does fall within the law, and even though I'm saying it publicly, and I think we all know this, if someone's parked, they get the tires chalked, and they're there for an hour and 58 minutes, and they go and they pull up two spots, you have moved your car. That clock does start over again, technically. It's unfortunate if someone does that. We have nice municipal parking right in the area. If they're going to be there for eight hours, why not just move it back there, but as opposed to moving your car.
And it does seem to ebb and flow, there's times where it seems to be working a little better, and then we kind of go back into some issues.
Yeah. It's all part of the program, so.
Well, that was a first reading, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Again, the next item on the agenda is a second reading of a bill for an ordinance 812-2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the Village Code pertaining to regular meetings. As you'll remember, this was in discussions of going to a 6:30 start time.
So we'll just have one more reading, and that would be it?
Unless, and if anybody has anything to add now, feel free. Okay, so that's the second reading. All right, now we have items that were referred from the August 19, 2019 Plan Commission meeting. This is, first is a review and consideration of a certified survey map for the Glen at Overlook Trails.
So nobody is able to be here from the Glen today. They have other obligations they have to attend to, but the point of this CSM is in order for them to dedicate the right-of-way and public access and utility easements for the future. So you'll see in all of the maps that they've attached, it's all of the easements, all of the right-of-ways, all of the, just everything that will be donated to the village down the road, but they need the CSM submitted to the county, so just standard.
Anybody have anything they want to add on that? All right, so.
So when they dedicate that, we're responsible to keep the plan, right?
Correct.
Yep, that's all public road, public right-of-way, so that would just be like everywhere else in the village, correct?
Isn't that pretty much what we're doing with the whole subdivision?
Hmm?
Isn't that what we're doing with the whole?
Correct.
So we're doing a whole subdivision of the condos that are, we're doing everything.
We're doing where everything is.
For the road, this lays out where the sewer lines are going to be and all that, because they have to designate their easements or the land to us.
Correct.
Sure.
But yeah, the paving and the roads.
But just like right-of-way in front of your home, well, right-of-way in front of a home or any other unit that is public is taken care of by that association or that home. The mulling, everything associated with that.
Yeah, we don't do the mulling.
Correct.
Anything else?
So the next, the next item on the agenda is.
No motion?
Oh, do we?
Motion to accept.
Oh, we do need, I'm sorry, my fault.
I make a motion to accept the CSM, all of them, from Overlook Trails.
It's been moved and seconded to accept that CSM as sent to us from the Plan Commission discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is a review and consideration of, in addition to Soberg Tool, this is at 620 Cardinal Lane.
Again, this is another item referred from the Plan Commission. I don't see anybody from Soberg in the audience. They're looking to do an expansion on their, at their 620 Cardinal location, taking half of the facility and adding a second building. They have a stormwater plan. They have everything in place. I'm trying to find a map. There's a map. They're getting rid of half of their parking lot, but they'll have as many spaces. It's a, pretty much a warehouse, so they don't have a lot of employees on site at all times, so they meet all the requirements with the building inspector as far as parking and everything associated with that.
One of the things that came up at the Plan Commission meeting was, our engineer was discussing rainwater, the water coming off from storms. I guess there's one, I'm trying to think of how to word this perfectly, there's one line that goes into, I'm not sure if, Mr. Faulkner, are you aware of the situation over there?
I am on the water sewer end.
Could you come up and could you tell the board, the engineer isn't here, I just feel like you could describe it better, there was a situation that our DPW caught. If it is legitimate, or if it is real on the situation that they saw, as he's about to explain, then we want to force them, that they need to do the work he'll explain.
It's not based on a storm sewer, it's based on sanitary sewer. When that building was constructed, they ran a sanitary sewer lateral into a manhole, and it's, it's called an inside drop, so that service comes, is supposed to come all the way down and then flow into the flow line. Well, it doesn't. It flow, it comes inside the manhole and just drops onto the bench, which is the flat part of the manhole, and it's potential a cause for sewer backups, so what we are requesting them to do is to finish it and correct that, construct it correctly, and bring it down into the flow line, and then it'll flow down towards the treatment plant.
The way it was explained to us at Plan Commission is they actually would run a pipe. There's this hole that's in the side of this big pipe. It would force them to run the pipe out down the side of that manhole cover, or the manhole hole, and then at the bottom, then it would have a spout where then it comes flowing out instead of it just dropping eight feet or 12 feet.
Correct. That's correct.
So if they, I don't, I don't know if we heard back from the engineer, I do know that that was part of the motion we made at Plan Commission.
It sounded like from the engineer that they're willing to do that for the village.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you guys would approve it with that contingency.
We would have to include that contingency.
So it's, based on what you know, both of those need to be done?
Just, we're going to do the one just on Soberg's property. The other one, the drawings were incorrect. I told the engineer, it does not go into that manhole.
Oh, okay, so we just have the one to do.
That is correct.
And that one will be dropped down as described.
Yes.
So, well, thank you. If anybody else, does anybody else have any other questions for, I just wanted to make sure, because it came up at Plan Commission, so I wanted you guys to all have. So I think it'd be important that, considering what we just heard, that that is part of the, that it's contingent upon us accepting, this is contingent upon that they get that fixed. I don't know whether we want to set a deadline or whether we need to, but.
Do you want to make a motion now, or wait with a contingency, or?
You can make a motion with a contingency, meaning that this is contingent upon them doing that.
Okay.
Or, I mean, I can't tell you what to do, whatever you feel most comfortable with, or, and we can ask Mr. Faulkner to tell us what he prefers we do.
Yeah. I mean, I wasn't at the Plan Commission, so.
Yeah, because they weren't at the Plan Commission, so it's helpful for us to know what's.
You can make a contingent, because they are more than happy to do that.
Okay. Our big thing is, I think that the board will be, really want to make sure that that just gets done, and it isn't just.
Would you want that done before the building is started?
I would think, is that possible to do before the building?
Yeah. It does, and I don't think it matters as long as it's in there that they do it.
I just, because they're going to put a contingency, I don't want them to finish the building, and then it just.
It won't go to the wayside, trust me.
I think that, is there a final sign-off that we have when someone does something like this?
Before they get occupancy.
Okay, so I think that that'd be an easy way to do it, or, just as a suggestion, if it was contingent before occupancy can be given, that's our deadline, it's contingent upon them doing this work in that sanitary sewer. I know that was very wordy. I'll make the motion that we accept this with the contingency that the sanitary sewer work as described by our engineer and DPW is completed before the occupancy is granted.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, or any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. All right. Now we're on to other items for consideration. Number eight being a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution Number 926-2019, a resolution pledging that the village board of the village of Heartland will expend funds necessary for the Heartland Public Library to exempt the village from the Waukesha County Public Library levy.
Also move we approve it.
Hold on, you can wait.
No, I mean, it's a requirement. I mean, if we don't do it, the county says we're not involved, we have no choice. I mean, it's something we have to do every year.
Well, I know. I, that's, no, that's good that there was a motion. I was just going to have her explain if it gets seconded, so that number one, like Rick, but also so the public gets, I know you get, we all know.
So if a municipality doesn't.
I'll second that.
I got two really nice sentences.
No, no, you're good. It's been moved and seconded. Our library director.
All right, so if a municipality doesn't certify that it will tax its residents at the same rate or higher than the county's rate, the residents of that municipality are then taxed by the county. In a nutshell, residents of the village would be double taxed for library services, and we don't want that.
So for the, for the public, and I know we go over this every time, some, many communities do not have a library. They get charged by the county. Heartland does have a library. If we don't make this motion, if we don't do this, not only will we get charged, just as if we're a community that doesn't have a library, we'll also have to pay what we have to pay for having the library and taking care of it, so as she just alluded to, we'd be double taxed. All in favor?
I think the important part about that is that it's like 65, 70% of our library is used by people that don't live in our village.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no way that we can have a fee or a tax to pay, and those people that use our facility pay.
Mm-hmm.
So by us getting involved in the county, the county then handles that fee situation, and we get reimbursed for, for the effort of having the outstanding library in the county.
Yep. And obviously, for anybody that has friends that don't live in Heartland, please tell them to come to the library here and get their books. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a Park and Recreation, Park and Recreation Board appointment as presented by the president. So, number one, we don't have a full board, but also, the name of the person that I'm planning on nominating, and you'll have a few weeks to think about, is Jack Kolo, K-O-L-O. I did, I did talk to him again before the meeting, he needs, he wants a couple more days, or a day, just to talk with his wife to make sure that he can make the proper commitment to what's going on, and also wants to have a conversation with the commissioner of that board, which is Tim Holquist. So in allowing that, I figure it's also not a bad thing that you guys know the name, and if you need the number or anything, and you want to give a call, it's appropriate that you're able to, because at the end of the day, the board is the one that actually approves it. But that's one of the, that's the person that I'd like to bring forward, and then so, if we could have it, because we don't have a full board.
Table it.
Yeah, I want to table it, but we can table that this is the person that is being nominated for next time. If something changes, I'll let the board know. But we would need a motion to do that. If someone's completely against that, you know, then we would need a motion to table So I'll request by making a motion that we table that, that at the next board meeting, Jack Kolo will be up for board approval for appointment onto the park board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that motion is carried. That'll be tabled till next time. Now we have announcements, and I, this morning, unfortunately, the village of Heartland lost Rick Stevens. He passed away this morning. It was not expected. I commend him for his service to the village, to the Heartland Rotary. There's other organizations that he served. He also was a supervisor on the, on the county board, but obviously, our deepest sympathy and peace go to his wife, that she can find some, some strength as she goes through these days ahead. I can't imagine what she's going through. I know they were very tight and leaned on each other a lot, so. That's, that's the only announcement I have. But we can, we do have other stuff that happened in the village. I know I saw somebody out there, so I'll just.
The sidewalk sale went without a flaw. It was great, a lot of people. That was a really good event for the village and getting people into Heartland, and I think people saw what, you know, a little bit more of Heartland than they would normally do too, you know, by being there. They walked through downtown, and so, yeah, it was, it was a good event.
Good. It sounded like you had some good vendors there, Scott.
I just want to tell you about, you guys signed a contract with AECom to come in and have do-leak detection on a water system. They found three hydrants leaking, two servicing, two water main breaks, and the DPW is in the midst of fixing them as we speak. So that contract was a good contract.
Thank you.
Just one quick reminder, Vicky Doberton, after over 18 years of service, will be retiring Wednesday, is her last day, so just wanted to remind you guys, if you see her, feel free to congratulate her, and she's done a great job for the PD, big help behind our accreditation effort, so she's done a lot of great things for us.
And Wednesday's her last day?
Wednesday's her last day.
Okay. Thank you. Please pass on your, our thanks from the board, for any of us that can't get over there before Wednesday. Anybody have any other announcements? Any trustees? Okay, with that, I will move to the next item. Consideration of a motion to recess to closed session pursuant to State Statute 19.851(c) for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, namely to review many resumes and select six to 10 semifinalists for the position of village administrator, and to reconvene into open session pursuant to 19.85, Section 2, for the purpose of considering any action as may be necessary and appropriate.
I make a motion to convene into closed session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and for that, we will need a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Anson?
Hi.
Trustee Doral?
Hi.
Trustee Myers?
Hi.
President Bannersville?
Yes.
Trustee Walsh-Lager? Trustee Ledke? And Trustee Connor?
Aye. The motion carries. So we will go into closed session. Thank you, everybody, for all of your service and hard work. Thank you, everybody, for all of your service and hard work.